All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the planning meeting, and this is also a public hearing, and it's joint with the town council, who is here for a public hearing tonight. The first item on the agenda is public comment concerning any issue that is not on the agenda. So if you have an issue that you need to talk to the planning commission about, this is the time that's been reserved for you, so that you're able to address them. Is there any public comment that needs to come?
I didn't see me on, but Ryan said we were on, Dave Lindahl.
Yeah.
Is that now or is that later?
That will be in the planner report section.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. With that, I'll entertain, well, let's go this way, let's, before we open the public hearing, do we want to have the applicant give his little thing, and then we'll open the public hearing?
I think that'd be a good idea.
So what do you want to do? Okay, we'll turn the time over to you, Mike, and go ahead.
Can I, do you want me to s-
I want you to do whatever you want to do.
I will just speak from here.
Okay.
I don't need a microphone. So my name is Mike Johnston, I'm an engineer here in town with Summit Engineering Group, and Robert Armstrong is here beside me, he's the applicant. Robert has the Huntsman property, it's four acres on Mill Road, right here, is purchasing this property. On the north is the Orton Triangle, the nursery. On the right, or the west, is Wolston Hume and his master. And on the, I think, is that his name?
McAllister.
Sorry, sorry, McAllister, the trucking operation. And on the little tri- the little square on the bottom left is Jesse Mayer owns that house. So this is where, this is where we're located. Across the street is Heber City, I believe that's called Heber Meadows, and they have an access, a road that fronts across the street from here. Here's an aerial view of the, of the property. So this prop- Robert Armstrong and Shirley Huntsman are asking the town to rezone this to commercial property. They feel that this meets all of the standards, and they're listed in the commercial zone for commercial property. This is a map, I'm sorry, it's faded out, but in that circle there is the triangle we're talking about. That triangle is bounded by Mill Road on the le- on the left, the diagonal is Highway 40, and then the bottom is 3000 South. So that is shown on your original documents of incorporation, and continues to be part of your master plan, showing this is an enterprise zone. An enterprise zone is specifically identified by the town to incentivize to be commercial and get tax incentives from the state of Utah for creating jobs and commercial growth. So you have this area along the highway, you have the area on the north along, I think, the Stone Yard, and you have the area along 3000 South down by Highway 189 on the left. We've done this, we've gone over this in the last planning commission meeting. So the Danieltown Commercial Code recognizes and establishes areas in Danieltown to accommodate commercial uses. The intent is, one, facilitate the sale of goods and services in areas which are most appropriate, and then it lists what are those appropriate areas. Attractive, commercial, mixed-use zones, and several areas of Daniel which are centrally located to the population, for residential or resort use. Three, allow separation of dissimilar service uses, so that you cluster the residential and you cluster your commercial. Allow commercial uses to be close enough to residential uses to be convenient. Number four, provide commercial zones that abut, or are in close proximity to a state highway, so that would be Highway 40 or Highway 189. I know that you don't want any commercial uses in your, in the core of your town. Number five, provide access to commercial zones off major roadways that are convenient and able to handle major traffic volumes without hazards. Mill Road is a collector road, it's, that and 3000 South are your two major roadways. And the, Mill Road in front of this Huntsman property is extremely wide. Heber City has widened this, it's improved on one side with curved gutter sidewalk, 46 feet wide of asphalt. It's built to a commercial arterial, or a commercial collector standard. So, that's the short presentation. This, this, the discussion is that this is situated, here's a, here's, back to the aerial, you've got the highway on the upper north side, you've got this collector road, Mill Road on the left. When this would, this, we've got a, oh. So, a month ago Jesse Mayer and the Huntsmans rearranged their per- their boundary, and pulled it back here, so that Jesse Mayer got much more land in his back, his backyard than he had along the frontage here. That would allow, that will allow the commercial access to be directly across from the Heber City's road going into Heber Meadows, which is right here, to come into here. There's also a, I'll show you on a map, but they also do have a highway access through this property, a 40-foot wide access to the highway, so it gives them two ways to get in and out. Certainly trucks, if, if there were trucks concerned, they would use this ac- they would use this access. This is very, has historically been used for truck storage and basically, I don't know, I'm sorry to say, but a junkyard. So, your commercial zoning has strict requirements on landscaping, fencing, hours of usage, noise, light, so all those things would be regulated if this went awa- when this went away. This is what it looks like now. It really is a truck junkyard, and this would be completely cleaned up. This is the annex, one of the iss- the interesting issues on this is the Wolston Humes have a right-of-way for a driveway crossing this property, there it is. This would remain as long as the Wolston Humes want it to remain, they have a, a right to have that, and their utilities running up through there. So that's not in question, there's, it's not going to be changed unless they agree to something that's better for them. So there's, you can see the act, this really fades out in here, maybe the lights, but-
Catch that on a map, like-
See if that does work.
Is that?
Well, slightly. I hope I'm not belaboring anything, I just want everyone to understand, so. This is the access to the highway, and this is the Wolston Humes easement crosses Jesse Mayer, then it comes through Huntsman, and then the Wolston Humes own this parcel here. So this is the frontage, this is the back park, the driveway would be right off of here, opposite of the Heber City Road, that would be its commercial entrance. This road is fully improved to right here. Some of the uses in your commercial code that we are, Robert is anticipating, these are some of the permitted uses, a nursery, small-scale retail, professional services, office services, business services, medical, lumber and building materials, heating and plumbing, electrical, legal, engineering, gyms, real estate. I'm not sure where the, the fear of large semi-trucks has come from, because that's not really what's allowed in this zone, and it's not anything that's anticipated. He's anticipating to build a, a flex office warehouse space geared towards construct contractors who do not drive semi-trucks. This is not a lumber yard, this is a, this is where electrical, so similar to Whitterson Landing on Daniel Road, that, that type of use, that low-key commercial, beneficial to the citizens, the people that work in this area, maybe some of them can move their home-based operations out of the middle of Daniel and come to the edge of Daniel where they have good highway access. So, those are the anticipated, that's what's anticipated, it's not going to be a tanger yard, that's not even allowed in your commercial zone, so. So that's the end of our presentation, and then we can answer any questions that might come up.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, does the commission have any questions before we open the public hearing?
What was the total acreage of this commission?
Four acres.
3.68.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
I'd give up one.
Okay.
You mentioned that Jesse's property has now increased in size?
No, they did an equal, an equal trade. Jesse's property is still one acre, it's just square-ish and he has a backyard now, before he did.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, okay. I'll take, entertain a motion to go out of regular session and open the public hearing.
I have a motion to go out of our regular session into public hearing.
Okay, have a first, or a second on that motion? Have a second on that motion? Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, this will open up the public hearing, so if you'll come to the podium, please state your name for the record, so we can get it in on the minute, and we'll just go and tell everybody who's had a chance to speak that the public hearing is. So as we move through this, give your pertinent information to the commission so they can make a recommendation to the council. The council's here, they'll be able to hear that. The reason we hold this combined is so that you don't have to come to two meetings. This is the one public hearing where you can just come one time, we know everybody's busy, but this is the process that we have to do to go through these zone changes. Okay? Go ahead.
My name is Stephanie Wolston Hume, we share two property lines with this Huntsman Armstrong property known as the Junkyard, and I have a petition here signed by 105 Daniel residents that would love to see this piece of property cleaned up, but not at the expense of rezoning to commercial. Our petition reads, we the undersigned are against the rezoning of the Huntsman property approximately 2880 South Mill Road, Daniel from RA5 to commercial. We believe any access for commercial property on Mill Ro- Mill Road would congest the Highway 40 intersection and Mill Road more than it is right now. We do not want commercial vehicles adding more traffic into our residential farming community. This would make it hazardous for our families to travel from that intersection down Mill Road to our homes, putting our families in danger with the extra commercial vehicles in our residential neighborhoods and degrade the quality of life we now enjoy. We want to preserve the integrity of a rural atmosphere, the very reason the town of Daniel was created.
Sure. Thank you.
Summit Engineering and Mr. Armstrong would have you think that it must go commercial because it's in the so-called enterprise zone. This is not true. The enterprise zone was created for a tax break to entice certain businesses to build in that area, which I'm sure Mr. Armstrong's business not, does not qualify. He put in his application, it was for a construction, what you call it?
What's, what's warehouse, what's space?
Okay, I, I have construction yard. There are eight property owners in this so-called enterprise zone, which there are six residential homes, horses, dogs, deer, bunny, you get the picture, and our families. This is not the place for commercial property. Once that is rezoned to commercial, there are two pages of businesses into that property, AKA drill rigs, semi-trucks, crude and gas trucks, and you guys admitted to us in the first meeting that we had, that it wasn't just pickups, it was commercial vehicles, it would be drill rigs, it would be these other semi-rigs. This would be nothing but a thoroughfare for semi-trucks to enter Mr. McAllister's property, so he doesn't have to go the expense to put a turn lane on Highway 40 into his property. Mr. McAllister stated in the April meeting, when asked about continuing the rezoning of his property to commercial, he was waiting to see what happened with the neighbor's zone change, AKA Mr. Armstrong Huntsman's property. Bringing commercial trucks down Mill Road would be asinine. They would be going through the Heber Meadows bus stop, which comes and goes eight times a day, big road or not, during the school year, putting our neighborhood kids in danger. Families and kids ride their bikes along there, let alone congest the Highway 40 Mill Road intersection with all the new homes, their traffic, and now a gas station being built there that we've fought for years on the corner property where the trees are now. This is not the place for this commercial property or business. There is a 40-foot right-of-way for this Huntsman property through McAllister's property, which has a 20-foot opening off Highway 40, the other 20 feet is fenced. This driveway access is zoned residential, agricultural, and cannot use, be used by commercial vehicles to access the Huntsman property until Mr. McAllister goes commercial and pays to have it rezoned commercial by the state of Utah. The crew trucks that are now using this is very illegal, and the Daniel Town had vocal over their eyes by Travis, the previous owner, two grandfathers, that tremendous. I talked to Austin Tripp, who is the guy at UDOT, he still has not heard from Mr. McAllister. He's not made a pre-application meeting on anything to do with the access on Highway 40. He's not made any attempt to contact Mr. Tripp and talk to Mr. Tripp, he says he's never heard from this man. He's, he's doing this to keep from putting the turn lane off of the highway, which if Mr. McAllister uses that for commercial property, that turn lane's still going to have to go there. I have a right-of-way easement through the Huntsman property, and it was not made for commercial vehicles to travel over it. It has utility right-of-ways on both sides. What happens when the Daniel irrigation line or the natural gas line gets crushed because of the weight of the trucks pushing rocks down under the pipes? What happens when my culinary water freezes because the commercial trucks, commercial trucks have pushed frost into the ground? The water line is now poly-pipe, and I can't hook up to a welder to thaw the line out as we've had to do in years past, because we are at the end of the Daniel culinary water line. The Daniel general plan says it's a blueprint for health, safety, well, and well there. Its aim is to preserve a rural atmosphere. The Daniel general plan also states it's to promote the most appropriate type of development within each planning area of the town while maintaining a rural atmosphere. This is a residential neighborhood and was not meant for semi-trucks, trailers, and commercial coming and going 24/7, which in commercial areas, I know it can't do that. Your Danieltown Commercial Zone, Section 8, 10, 13, number 3, page 147, states emissions, there will be no dust, noticeable odor, smoke, vibration, intermittent light or noise shall be emitted which is discernible beyond the property boundary lines. This means no noise, and this means no 24/7. There's also a Section 8, 10, 3, number 5, on page 147, that says sewer system, all uses located within a commercial zone shall be connected to a sewer system. Water, page 147, Section 8, 10, 3, number 7, says adequate water, no use may be permitted unless it is shown that there is adequate supply of water for the use in fire flow. Page 205 says Section 8, 21, 19, transitional development standards for non-residential uses ordering residential zones requires landscaping, trees, setback measurement requirements, six-foot solid wall or fence, no glare lighting, no open storage of merchandise or equipment, noise restrictions, no overhead bay doors that face a residential area, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I ask the Danieltown Council to deny the rezoning of the Huntsman Armstrong property to commercial to protect the Daniel residents, Heber Meadows residents, our livestock and wildlife, from commercial traffic and mayhem, and to protect our rural and residential community of Daniels, the very reason we became a town.
All right, so I'm Todd Whitey, I'm representing Heber Meadows, and so we also have a petition, we have 47 signatures, and our petition reads as follows. We the undersigned are against the rezoning of the Huntsman property approximately 2880 South Mill Road, Daniel from RA5 to commercial. We believe any access to the commercial property on Mill Road would congest the Highway 40 intersection at Mill Road more than it is right now. We do not want commercial vehicles adding more traffic into our resident- residential area, this would make it hazardous for our families to travel from that intersection to our homes. But our families in danger with the extra commercial vehicles in our residential neighborhoods and degrade the quality of life we now enjoy in our community, so.
Thank you.
My name's Kim Herringham, and you had mentioned something I'm just curious about, you said that there's no major trucks coming in and out, but my wife, or my husband took a shot of your property so I could show it around when I got signatures, and there's some major trucks parked right around the thing right there, so I'm curious, as you said, there was no major trucks. So that was my, I wanted to bring to light, that it obviously shows right here that he's got some big trucks parked around there that just to replace.
Whose property is that?
Around your thing right there, and it shows that has trucks.
Yeah, that's not, that's not Robert's property.
That's not it?
That's the existing truck yard for the McAllister.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on that thing, it's the McAllister.
Our prop- Robert, that's not mine, Robert's property is to the bottom, you see a big quanta, the trucks, that's not the property.
It's there, trucks on it, but there, there's trucks on it, but they don't run, they're just kind of sitting there.
Oh, okay. I was just curious, because I was like, wait a minute, so then that's going to loop around, that's not what you're going to be putting the commercial property on?
No.
That would be still up there.
Oh, okay.
Mayor Turner for the record. My concern is certainly commercial access off of Mill Road. I've had this discussion with lots of folks, I think our 20-year plan is pretty clear as far as what we have available to do, certain things in the zoning. My question would really be to you, Mike, as far as saying, you know, is there any issues as far as if you've looked at access through either other properties or to 40 rather than having, I mean, you know, a lot of what I hear tonight and what I've heard is the access from Mill Road end, not as much as the issue more so than that. Has that been thoroughly looked at every which way that you could maybe, say you just can't do X, but you can do Y?
Well, Huntsman has an access to the highway, no, it's got to go vice versa, by the way. McAllister does not have an access to Mill Road, so the fear that his trucks will be driving through Mill Road is unfounded.
Right. And he's going to be off 40?
Yes.
My understanding would be, this is my understanding, that he can come and go just like one stop for sewer evil, or excuse me, sewer evil, I mean, they've got these wider openings, and until he builds, that might be an issue, that part of Hill now, it's not an issue.
Right, it's, it's not an issue, my understanding, I mean, it's not an issue for you about until he actually comes through and changes the use on this property. Heber Meadows, how many homes are in Heber Meadows?
Eight.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight? So that's, that's a daily traffic count of 600 cars coming out of that, that, that development. That's 12 times the amount of cars that this would produce, maybe more. So, cars, the, traffic is traffic, when we talk about commerc- commercial uses, it's basically anything that's non-residential, non-industrial. So, large semi-trailers are industrial uses, loading up at Lee's Market or bringing in lumber to Burton Lumber, those are industrial trucks. Commercial trucks would be a commercial van, might be a box truck for a plumbing, plumbing contractor, that's what, that's what a commercial vehicle is. Pickup trucks, commercial trucks, vehicles.
So far as the access, whether it's on or off of 40 or through somebody else, or is the main-
Well, it's appro- it's, it's appropriate for those vehicles to use Mill Road, that's what Mill Road is built for, it's a collector street, it's a, it's your major, Mill Road and 3000 South are your major collector, even arterial streets that all of their streets funnel to, so their, their function is to move traffic.
I understand your position, and I'm just wondering about the other accesses, if that's been looked at.
Well, we only have, so we only have an access through McAllister or through, or on the Mill Road. Now, if it was built, it would be built in the best place, which is across from the existing road, you don't want to offset these. And, and it would be, and it would be one access, it could even be called a private road, so it would be an interior road teeing up with, crossing from the other roads.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Jim Wolston Hume, I just got the question, coming out of Heber, everybody's adopted the rule of 300 foot off of Highway 40 for the commercial, is that true with the Heber? Because his property, he wants to go commercial a lot more than 300 feet off of Highway 40.
Okay, anybody else?
My name is Tricia Steiner, and my concern is just the same as the last meeting, same with everyone else, that extra traffic, and you say there's not going to be a lot of extra traffic, but usually businesses have big trucks that deliver stuff to their stores or whatever you're going to have. Are you not going to have anything delivered to your place?
I think it would be very easy to breathe that trucks, large, large trucks, delivery trucks could access from the highway. You know, once we actually come to a development plan, but-
But, you know, there's no plan right now, so right now it would be Mill Road.
No, we're, we don't have a zone yet.
Well, I'm just saying, right now, you're saying it's going to be Mill Road.
Mill Road is the appropriate place for general-
And that's right across the street from the bus stop?
Yeah.
And my kids go up and down the street all the time, that's my major concern.
So do they cross the street?
They do, they have to cross the street.
Cross, they cross Mill Road.
They have to cross the street to get on the bus, and then they go over to Heber Meadows all the time.
Where do they cross Mill Road?
So my house is at the stop sign there, on the left side, and they have to cross the street.
So, traffic won't be going to 3000 South?
No, but they have to go down to the bus stop, and they have to cross the street down at the bus stop to go across, right there, where the traffic's going to be going back and forth.
So that's a concern.
That is.
You should have, you should have a crosswalk at, at 3000 South.
There should be, yeah, I agree, there should be something there, that is a concern. And, yeah, and it's just not my kids, these kids going back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's a major concern for me.
Eric, that'd be a good thing to talk about, the crosswalk.
That will be a different public hearing. We've had some discussions on true, but better, crosswalk. Okay, is there any other public comment? None? All right, I will entertain a motion- Alright, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and go back into our regular session.
I move that we close the public hearing and move back to regular session.
Okay, and the motion, is there a second?
All second.
You have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now back in our regular session. Okay, we've received some public testimony. Thank you all for coming and doing that. That's, that's the only way that this commission and the town council gets a lot of the information is by the public. Your concerns are our concerns. So is there any questions you guys have for the applicant at this time, or members of the public, or?
I have a question. So I'm a little confused with the private driveway that runs through the middle there. So how would you propose a building? Could you, you're going to have to cross across that driveway somewhere, are you going to have open space? I mean, just, are you postulating, obviously you don't know for sure?
Building would have to be.
It'd have to be on the back, south side.
Yeah.
And then the other side would be something else.
It's going to be a small building.
Because I just.
We can't, we can't put anything on top of the east.
Understood, but you can drive across it.
Oh, yeah.
You have to, if you've got something on the west side.
Private property, you can drive across it.
Correct, great, okay. I have a little bit of that vision.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It can't be fenced, it can't be inhibited.
Okay, does the council have any questions? The applicant tonight?
One of the things that I find myself hearing as I listen to this conversation is that in order to accommodate what's going to happen, it's been suggested that the town needs to put in sidewalks and crosswalks and maybe a crossing guard. And what we have chosen to do is have narrower streets, quieter traffic, so that our children don't have to be supervised every moment of their lives. The other issue is, you show us a picture of how wide Mill Road is, but you don't point out that that road takes a serious hit way before three thousand south. And so while you say that three thousand and Mill Road are collectors and built to a commercial collector standard, I'm not really seeing that at the intersection of Mill Road and three thousand. And I think that would be a question as well. I don't see that intersection as being able to accommodate additional traffic. And as far as fifty-eight homes, anybody who's been to any of the zoning meetings knows that fifty-eight is the beginning. And that corner is going to be filled. And that's Heber City's problem. But our problem is what to do with power supply.
So you're right, your, your three thousand south is not built to a collector standard, but it is your collector road.
And all Mill Road is not built to.
But Mill Road is built to collector standard until it gets past its property.
To the Heber City.
And then it narrows down. And about the crosswalk, I'm saying, if your, if your kids are crossing three thousand south, you should have a crosswalk at, I'm sorry, if they're crossing Mill Road, they should not be crossing a road, a mid-road, especially this road. It's too big and there's already too much traffic from the people that live there. You should have a crosswalk at three thousand south. That would be the safest thing to do. And I'm not saying you have to do it, and I've heard her and I agree with her. And I'm not saying you must build sidewalks either. If you wanted a sidewalk in Truver Gutter, you would require the person building this project to put it in. If you don't want it.
And it would involve us changing our town code and our rules.
So we're not asking for it. I'm saying you have a landscape code and improvement codes and fencing codes, and all those codes would be applied, including the water and the sewer. The sewer system is, would be a septic sewer system, it's not a city sewer system. Any, any, any use on here that would require that, which would be almost any use. But if you have a bathroom, you got to have a septic system. So those will have to all be complied with. But you, the town would pay no money for any of that.
We don't have sidewalks and we don't have crosswalks because we're a rural community and that's what we want it to be and that's why we want to stay that way. That area is not for long any longer because of Heber. No matter what you do to the Daniel side, but we can still get away from that. Because once that property goes commercial, it can go anything. It's not exactly what Mr. Armstrong says that he's going to do with it. He's got free reins. And there's two pages of free reins.
The other thing that I see about that specific piece of property is if it is only commercial, then yes, it's much more valuable. But that also makes it open to commercial development. And commercial development brings noise pollution, light pollution. It brings a different sort of atmosphere than if they were pasture. Which is what it would be useful for as a forerunner piece.
You're right, and this is a hard, the interesting thing is you have a commercials zone in Heber Town. So your decision, maybe we want no commercial.
Or maybe we don't want some.
Because I can only, I can only think of two places that would even be, it's even reasonable. We've talked about those, three thousand south, one eighty-nine and right here. That's it.
And let's propose he goes to three thousand south and one eighty-nine.
Please let the commission do their job. You make good points.
So I guess one of my issues, and you've all been here for the last two years as we've been discussing commercial and residential, there's a couple of signatures on the petition that don't want this changed, that have what I would call businesses that don't meet our requirements in the residential zone. But yet we don't want commercial, and I guess as a town we've got to decide, are we going to just turn into one big commercial zone, which is kind of where we're headed? Or do we actually allow commercial areas? And I think we're going to have to look hard at that, and that's going to affect people either way. And I, you know, I don't have the answer at this point.
You have three people knocking on the door, I'll call it right now, you know?
Yeah, I know we do, and I'm just saying, I look at the list and really we've got commercial operations running within the town, and some of them signed the petition saying we don't want it. And I'm like, you know, how are we supposed to do this?
I'll make a comment as well, is we got, so you just mentioned, Mike, we got three properties. Well, each one are in different stages and each one have unique issues. And it would, you know, it'd be nice to, and certainly in the perfect world, if all that, if you didn't care when it's presented, that's the issue, it never happens. And so from my point of view, speaking tonight, and I want to understand how those three will and want to pack together once, if, or that ever makes that transition. And we're talking about one little piece of pie that I believe made, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for planning tonight, but from the council, from my first point of view is we still have to chew on, including all three of those, I don't understand, but I don't know, I just want to make that comment.
Right.
There's all three knocking on the door, and you want to do it right the first time.
Yeah. I anticipate you're going to chew on this for quite a while. But, but at some point you probably need to make, you got to come to consensus, or this will continue. People will continue knocking, saying, here's your code and here's your zone and.
Here's our plan, it's one of your plans.
Yeah.
I find it almost incredulous that, a point that I think is as applicable to any of this as anything that anybody's brought up, was only mentioned once, and was by the petitioner here. I have lived here long enough to remember when the field where all of the residential is now was being farmed by Mr. Raymond, and there was zero traffic on it. With all those homes on there now, we've taken a huge hit as far as traffic goes on Mill Road. And yet nobody seems to be concerned about that. I think if we're concerned about traffic, we can't pick and choose which traffic we're concerned about. Increased traffic is increased traffic. And I think all those homes that's part of Heber City has impacted Mill Road in a significant portion, and I think that we need to recognize that. I, I don't know what anybody else's opinion is on that, but gosh, it just seems to me like the increased traffic is over just a few years ago phenomenally more than what it was. If we're looking to keep the traffic out of here, I don't know that we can do that. As, as being part of a, a town and a community, our job is to facilitate, not to prevent because of lack of, of providing the service. I would very much like us to consider those six hundred vehicles on Mill Road that are already there that have been a six hundred percent advantage over when Mr. Raymond was farming that land and there was zero traffic.
Okay. Any other questions from the council or the commission?
I've had a thought, um. In the past, it seems like there's been other interested parties in the property and they've been to build homes there, and they've been denied being able to build a home there because of the acreage requirements. If this was zoned commercial, would there be an allowance for a septic system on there because of that? Does it have buildings and restrooms and things like that?
Yeah, the health department is, of course, we're under their, under their auspice, but they're the ones that will approve the design for the commercial area. And we, we, the meters in place up the road there, it's, it's also on a septic.
So it would make it usable that way?
Yeah.
So in the past, as far as being able to build a home there and use that as a residential area, it's not been able to happen, and it's been left vacant and used as a storage yard because it's, that's about all it could be used for, or farm ground. Is that kind of my understanding on?
Yeah, there was some interest in, in building a house on that parcel.
What could happen with the property now, right now it's left in the RA five zone. There can't be a house built there, or it could be used for as farm ground, basically. If I, if I interpret things right.
And there was some interest in that, there was not a determination made on if there was a lot of records or not. It never made it to that point, but there was some interest on building a house on that parcel.
So if you quite get to a lot of records, okay. Glad that's clear of.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
One more anecdote about my point about the traffic. I had a personal situation in my own life. I had a seven-year-old nephew who was on his way to school, exactly the concern that's being expressed about the crossings and the people living in the residential side on, in Heber Road. He was seven years old and he was crossing at a non-crosswalk and he got hit. And it wasn't by a commercial truck, it was by an automobile, a standard passenger car. He was run over and came out the backside, broke his pelvis, broke his leg in two places. And as he recovered from that, and as he got a little bit older, that leg on that side that was injured, broken, and his pelvis became a half inch shorter than the, the leg that he didn't break. That wasn't commercial, that was a residential driver in a residential area. Increased traffic can and does affect people very much in school zones and in areas where kids cross the street. And I think if we're concerned about it, that we really need to address that. Fortunately, he survived. But I think that that kind of a situation right now has a great deal of potential of happening even if we deny any kind of commercial zone. It's very, very real, a very real threat. And increased traffic is just, is what the insurance companies and the casinos all go off of, is it's a game of numbers.
Okay, is there any other questions for the applicant, or?
Good on the commission, council? Is there anything that's come to light, anybody wanting to comment on before we?
I have a quick question. So, you know, I have the property right across the street from the bus stop, that's a concern, which, you know, I agree is a concern for kids. I mean, my understanding is that bus stop could be turned, moved internally inside the subdivision. The bus could make a loop inside that subdivision as a possible solution to the safety issues with the kids. So they're not out on Mill Road. So I, I think there's options to some of these fears that we have for safety, which, you know, safety for the kids needs to be top priority. I agree a hundred percent. But to be, you know, just closed-minded to the whole option of this triangle, you know, changing to possibly a commercial zone because of these fears and not looking at possible solutions, I think is a, would be a mistake.
Nate, did you, so I have heard that they had, wouldn't, that that, in my mind, would be a real great, a great mitigator at the school. Have you heard the school district would do that?
I, I don't know, I'm just asking. You know, just saying, hey, there's possible solutions for, for some of this, and, and I, I have a friend that's on the school board. I, I'm going to ask him.
Well, after a bus, I'm just going to maybe find out some, some things I don't know, yes or no, that, that just seems interesting.
Nate, if I could respond, my, my point, my point is regardless of whether we change property to commercial zone or whether we leave it as RA five zone, folks, these problems are not only upon us, but have been upon us, and we need to address them. It's irrelevant whether we change the zone, these, these problems exist already. And, and they, they became dramatically more when we have that kind of traffic increase on Mill Road, and that's been that way for a couple of years. I, I have to be really careful what I say, I, I don't. Had my nephew been run over by a commercial truck, I don't know what the outcome would have been, and I'm not suggesting that. What I'm saying is, is that we need to open our eyes and realize that we've already got issues regarding traffic. And, and I think that's an excellent suggestion, if we could move the bus stop internally into the, the residential area, that would eliminate a great deal of children out on Mill Road.
I haven't ever thought, just wanted to. See if we can get it back.
Okay. Go back here, do you have a comment? No, it's okay. Good, okay, is there anybody else?
One, one thing real quick on his property is, I, to me, I mean, fortunately, my piece of property I have had a house on it when I bought it, I own three point eight acres, and I think that's approximately about the same size as his piece. You know, the Huntsmen's own this piece, which basically because of the ordinances that you guys have created in the town, that piece of property is pretty much worthless. It's not even, in my opinion, set up a farm. I mean, the energy, to farm that piece of ground would be wasted energy, in my opinion. So because of some of these rules, you guys created, on, on the residential side, you've got a worthless piece of property. And I know, you know, from, you know, probably their side, they're trying to get something out of something. I think that's something, you know, for fairness out of them, that, you know, that some of it needs to be considered, whether we like to or not. At the end of the day, we got to consider, you know, economics as a big factor in some of this stuff.
So if we allow, just a question, if we allow these pieces that's not quite five acre to go commercial, what's to prevent everybody that owns five acre, to say one, I don't need this, I'm going to sell this four acre and make one go commercial?
Well, they'd have to change.
I mean, we have.
And then what they'd have to do?
For starting everything that's not five acres go commercial, we're not going to be rural anymore.
Yeah, it's a little bit different, because once you're grandfathered in, like Nate's is, if you decrease the size of that, that use goes away. So his residence wouldn't be able to beat that if he sold an acre off. If you have five and you sell an acre off, you're no longer a legal law, you just created an illegal law. So your use would discontinue at that point. We have property in the town that people have sold, strips off of, they're not eligible for a building permit, they're not eligible for bank financing, it's an illegal law. We have those in our town. Now, just one more thing around Nate's is, the town didn't create these, we get these given to us from the county. So these aren't the zones that we, yeah, we haven't created this, but we're picking up the pieces, so. Okay, who else, Nate?
So real quick on that, I'm not, I just want to clarify, I'm not suggesting that every piece of town, every, every piece of property at Daniel that's not available turns commercial, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying this particular piece of property, in my mind, that's very close to the criteria that this town has set forth to be in a potential commercial zone. So therefore, this piece of property has potential to be changed in the zoning that is beneficial to them. Does that clarify what I'm saying?
Yes, so noted, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else, anybody?
You've got to remember, it's in the middle of a residential area and there are six homes there in those eight pieces of property. That's, I would say that's pretty much residential area.
Okay, Eric?
Yes?
On that issue, by today's standards, I don't know how many of the six, but I know three of the six homes that are adjacent to this property would not be, if they didn't have a home on it today, could not be developed residential. My, Stephanie's, and the other piece, I can't remember their names.
All those houses have been there forever.
I, I know, but I'm just saying, under today's criteria, they do not qualify as buildable residential lots because of the way, the sizing. So, it's not really a residential area by today's standards.
Yeah, and we see that, I mean, the valley's changing, we see it all over, these things are changing. And there's no way you can stop development, you can guide it, and that's what we're trying to do here, is guide development. So, if anybody thinks they can stop developments, they get run over pretty quick.
I have, I have one more comment I want to say on this. Obviously, you guys know my position, I'm on, I'm one of the guys knocking on the door. So, while I got the chance, I'm gonna say a few things, but, you know, everyone brings up this corridor thing, you know, they want access, they want commercial to have access off Highway 40. And I think McAllister's piece is one of the few that actually has it and probably a legitimate access to do that. My piece is right on Highway 40. UDOT is not gonna allow, they're not gonna let me do it as much as you guys want that. Rob's kind of in the same boat. Other pieces of property that are potentially on this commercial corridor that we're looking, you know, people are looking for in the future, are not gonna be able to access that Highway 40. And there's probably gonna be, access corridors are gonna have to come off, but I can't remember your name, sorry, Mike says, off the corridor of Mill Road and 3000. That's probably where it's gonna end up coming off someday, and that, that's just the realism of it. Because UDOT is not gonna allow it.
Correct. Yes.
Is there already an easement or a right-of-way off of Highway 43, McAllister's property to that property?
There's rumors, it'd be, I haven't seen it.
Well, if it's, but, let, let me tell you. In, from personal experience, if a wagon drove through that at one time, that's considered a right-of-way. If it was an iron-tired wagon, that is a right-of-way, and they have a right to access to that property from there to here. I know that from personal experience.
Yeah, it's a legitimate right-of-way, never a...
It, it only takes one trip with a wagon.
Well, the lawyers make a lot of money deciding that, then...
Well, I'm telling you, the county, the county took our ground from, from me out in Duchesne County.
Uh-huh.
And, and that's what they said, if an iron-tired wagon made one trip through there to that property, that's considered a right-of-way. So...
There's a pretty little bar to clear, isn't there?
Yep, that's pretty...
There is a 40-foot needed, there is a 40-foot needed right-of-way. 20 feet of it is open, 20 feet of it is fenced. According to Austin Trip at UDOT, it's to only be used for what that property of McAllister's is owned for right now, which is agricultural residential. So, the, the semis that he's got going in there through that right-of-way access is illegal. And so, Mr. Armstrong cannot put commercial vehicles down that 40-foot right-of-way until Mr. McAllister changes that with the state of Utah, brings it up to Utah standard specs, to a commercial right-of-way when he puts his property commercial. Mr. Mc, Mr. Armstrong can't use it until then. And the trucks that are on there now should not be using it. And there, we go right back to the turn lane off of Highway 40. Yet, the 20 feet that is fenced can be bought by the state of Utah, it's gonna cost him some money. But there is an access there.
Or back to the attorneys deciding whether you can or not.
The county built that road through our property and gave it to a man. He, they built it through our property, another man's property, to a guy's property out there, and they paid for it all. They took, I don't know, I think it was a couple hundred feet right through the middle of our feed yard. And there wasn't a thing we could do about it.
Nothing, no.
Eric, the reason that access is there on Highway 40 is at one point in time along our right-of-way easement was the Old Timpano Pass irrigation canal. And so, they put an access off of Highway 40 into that upper piece, which is behind Jesse Neer's property and Mr. McAllister's property. That's why it was given there.
So, it's an irrigation easement?
Now, now, no. Now, the irrigation ditch along my right-of-way easement has been filled in because they don't use it anymore. The water's been pressurized. So, the, so the irrigation canal was filled in. So, therefore, the only access into the property off of Mill Road is across my easement. But there isn't 40-foot access off of Highway 40 because of that canal that was there years ago.
I've seen some documents where it showed it was Kitty Wompas. I haven't seen actually easement documents, so I'm just, I can't say whether there's one there or not. I don't know if you guys have one.
Oh yeah.
It's there, it's, it's documented.
Okay, so, easement. Any other questions?
Real quick on the traffic. I, I, working out there on, you know, at my place of operation, you know, we're talking about traffic and how things impact traffic, and it does. I see county trucks, they use 3000 South and come down Mill Road all day long instead of going through town, that's what they're doing. So, if you make commercial zone on the other end of town, it is gonna impact Mill Road. Like to his point though, if you build a subdivision, whatever, traffic is traffic, and that, that's, you know, my opinion. It becomes then, you know, how do we deal with the safety issues of that traffic? Eventually, there's gonna be a white at that intersection. I mean, I'm scared to death to cross that intersection, I do it every day, you know? And we, you know, have safety meetings about it within my company, because, because it's a huge safety issue. I guarantee, I mean, you have a higher risk of getting hit crossing that highway than you do walking down Mill Road. That's just my personal opinion, but...
Well, especially on holidays.
Yeah, on holidays.
So, that's all late traffic, that's five, six times what we have here in the county.
And, and so, yeah, so where are all the residents that signed this petition going when it's on a holiday? They're going down Mill Road, going down 3000 South, and they're going down and catching all the whites. If they're smart and safe for the families, that's what they're doing. But that impacts everybody within this community, that Heber City subdivision, that all those peoples are signing this petition to fight him.
Yeah, and by the way, we invited this county to drive up there all winter long, so, by invitation.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just saying, I hear saying, the traffic, people are, are throwing this fear factor into here and, and, you know, like he's gonna create this big traffic nightmare. And I'm saying that the traffic nightmare, I'm agreeing with him, is there.
Right.
And it's not, it's not gonna come from his little piece of ground.
And it's been there for a couple of years.
Yes.
It's not new.
So, my comment on this is, it's not us versus him.
Yeah, and I'm, so I'm, I'm kinda battling the...
I know, but you just said that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not us versus him, we're not, it's not Armstrong. We're looking at ways to manage property.
Sure.
And we're deciding whether or not zoning that commercial is the best use of town.
And I, I, I guess I'm combating more the public opinion of this traffic and using that as a fair reason for you guys to go against him. And I'm, I'm kind of more, I'm sorry...
And go against the rezoning.
The rezoning, going against the rezoning.
I mean, Rob can certainly purchase that piece of property and use it for whatever he wants, we're gonna be fine. And the Huntsmans have every opportunity to sell that property as an RA5 piece of property and do whatever whoever wants to do with it. So, the question is not, are we depriving people or denying people or making decisions based on code and based on what our research shows as willing best for the town?
I'll post mail better, I mean, English, vernacular, whatever it's like.
Well, just since we're talking about, we don't wanna do the fear factor, which I agree with. I mean, the fear factor is your ticket. We also don't wanna use the watch out for poor Rob Armstrong because they're gonna get, it's nothing, it's not...
Yeah, and I apologize for, I apologize if that's the way it came across.
Okay, anybody else? Do you have a good?
Well, my only question is, is it the, just a comment, I should probably do it during the comment session, but then had, they had a possibility, so they had three and a half acres or whatever, you kind of referred it with the RA5. From this 3000 down, we're on an acre, because it was already, it was already something like, or it was already...
Can you speak up, sir?
Yeah, and I think the property next to us was originally an acre, but I think he's added on.